Yeah, yes. He's not connected with Robyn. Well, Ted, we didn't get here.
Are you guys are now live?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're, we're live whenever you'd like to get the session started.
Twice in one day.
Like to get started. Work session over.
Perfect. In your work session packet, there is a packet of information compiled by the Virginia Department of Transportation related to the annual review and development of your secondary six-year plan, which is, I think, a process that all of you all are familiar with. So I don't have many remarks other than to turn it over to Alan, who is on the Zoom call to review the information. And then ultimately, what I'm seeking is, once you all receive the information from VDOT and you provide any changes or additions to the plan based on the information from VDOT, you would authorize VDOT to make the requested changes to the draft six-year plan and then schedule the required public hearing for your meeting on May 25th. Alan?
Ms. Simpson, can you hear me? Good afternoon.
Yes, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Great. Well, Chairman, members of the board, good evening. And before you is the packet for our secondary six-year plan update. And we can walk through the packet real quick, answer any questions that you may have, and then we can discuss some recommendations that we had in the draft plan. So the projected allocations for fiscal year 2027, 2026, 2027 are included. The existing six-year plan that was approved last year is also in the packet. And then some statistical data on road projects, both paved and unpaid, secondary routes in Orange County, if you wanted to evaluate vehicles per day or consider another project that we didn't include in the draft plan. Do you have any questions about your packet that I can answer? If not, I'll jump to the comparison between the existing plan and the proposed.
Very good.
Great. Very good. Well, in, in fiscal year 2027, which begins July the 1st, 2026, we're anticipating the same allocations that we received that we're projecting for fiscal year 2026, which for district grant unpaid funds that we can use for any route in the secondary system that is not hard-surfaced, of $284,000. And then telefee funds, those are funds that we can use on any project in the secondary system or a project that's not like a rural addition project where we're making improvements to a private street and bringing that into the system. You have, we're anticipating an allocation of $101,000. So in your plan, what we are proposing are really three primary recommendations. We're not adding any projects to your secondary six-year plan this year. What we've done is we've taken surplus funds from the Battlefield Farms project, the Route 627 overlay and trench widening, and we've moved those into the plan to accelerate the last segment of Route 602 at the western end so that we can try to get as much work and possibly complete the entire segment of 602 west of 652 this year, weather permitting. So we took the surplus funds from Battlefield, put those on the last route segment of 602 to accelerate it so we can begin that work this year. We shifted funding on, well, Harbor Drive, the rural addition project, making the improvements to the private street first. We divided that into two route segments. And then we shifted funding from that project by dividing it into two route segments to Matthews Mill. And so we've shifted funding from Route 630. Matthews Mill Road was divided into two route segments. We've shifted some of the funding from Harbor Drive by dividing it into two segments to Matthews so that we can accelerate that work and begin this year after July the 1st. And neither, I do want to note that neither Matthews Mill Road, the two route segments 630 or Harbor Drive will be fully funded this year, but they'll be sufficiently funded so that as of July the 1st, we'll be able to begin that work. And if, if there was, in, in future years, if you'll note in the draft compared to the existing plan, and I'm still here, I was going to try to pull the numbers up. You'll note that towards the end of the plan, Greenwood Road is still fully funded in FY '26, fiscal year '26. Chicken Mountain Road, which was fully funded in fiscal year 2024, is now fully funded in fiscal year 2025. So we did shift around those two projects in the future years to push the funding out a little bit. Bushy Mountain is still in the plan, but we've taken project surpluses and telefee funds from Harbor. And by dividing Harbor, it's allowed us to both accelerate the two route segments on 630 Matthews Mill so we can begin those this year and also take the surplus funds from Battlefield Farms trench widening, put it on that western segment of 602 so that we can begin that and complete it this year as well.
And Alan, what are the, on the, on the Chicken Mountain and Greenwood, what, what do you, what is the plan there? What are you doing?
On Chicken Mountain Road, we've pushed the funding.
No, I mean, I understand you pushed the funding. I'm talking about what is the funding for? What are you going to execute to those roads?
Oh, the Chicken Mountain and Greenwood Road are both rural rustic routes. So we'll hard-surface the first leg of Chicken Mountain on, well, I'd say the first leg. It's on the backside south of 620 and 655. There's a segment to, I'd have to look to see what that Western Gate name is at Montpelier.
Yeah, okay.
That Chicken Mount, right.
I think that was to go from basically Taylorville Road up past the entrance to Montpelier. Is that the idea?
Yes, sir. It sure was.
And what about Greenwood Road?
Yeah, Greenwood Road, that funding is pushed out. Well, it's still, the funding's pushed a little bit, but the goal is to hard-surface the southern segment of Greenwood after the bridge construction is complete this year.
All the way out.
All, it's almost all the way to the cul-de-sac. Right now, we're planning to get all the way to the end. There's a narrow, narrow segment that we'll have to ditch and we probably won't be able to get 18 feet through all of it. But we're going to push the funds as far as we can to get to the southern end at the cul-de-sac.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, a question on Harbor. You were talking about breaking it into two pieces. We talked at one time about doing some of the culvert work and ditching and so forth, but holding off on the hard surface until all of that was done, do that as a second phase. Is that still generally the split you're talking about or are you doing different segments?
We're proposing to split it into two route segments. And we would still do the culverts first, bring in our hired equipment contractor as soon as the funding is available this July, and begin work repairing and improving the culverts on the segment probably up to the cul-de-sac where Shore Drive peels off to the north. That would be the first segment and we would do all the culvert work first as much construction as we could and then let it consolidate with traffic over the winter and probably come back in the spring and hard-surface that first segment.
Yeah, okay.
Then the funding comes online next July for the second segment.
Okay, all right. That's comparable to what we talked about before.
Okay.
Just so I understand, Matthews Mills, I'm trying to read all the fine print. Does this, does this cover, does this surface the entire unsurfaced portion?
The two projects combined do. We will come in, same philosophy as Harbor, perform as much of the drainage and grading work as we can this year. And when the remaining funding becomes available, we would hard-surface it. Moving the funds allows us to begin work on it this year.
Right. Any other questions, Alan? Very good. You have anything else, Alan?
No, sir. Not, not unless the board has any questions.
I have an unrelated to the six-year plan. Do you know what funds you all have used for the repair of 611, 604, and 621?
No, sir.
Okay. If you have, have an opportunity, if you could attempt to dig those up and shoot me an email with them.
Yes, sir, I sure will. Over at the eastern end. Got it.
Yes, sir. We'll be having a need for that in the very near future.
Yes, sir, I sure will.
Thank you. Everybody good?
Everyone's good.
Only thing I'd like to ask Alan is if he could find a few more million to throw in there, that'd be really nice.
We, we would appreciate that as well and.
Great.
Exactly. All right, well, very good. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. Yeah, thank y'all. And thanks to Bethel and Daryl for their hard work. All right. Y'all take care.
You popped that one by my, it's a private group coming on. Work session's over.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a motion to schedule the public hearing?
I don't know. Is there anybody that would like to make that?
I don't think so.
Tuesday, May 25th?
Yes, Tuesday, May 25th.
I guess not.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
You know where we're moving.
All on flavor.
There we go.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, now, now we are adjourned.
Walker, can we pause the live stream for now?
You should see all of the best power projects.
Walker, can you resume the live feed, please?
You guys are all good?
Ready?
Yes, sir.
Hold worship, pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anyone have any additions to leave or change this to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Pass as you can. Next is special presentation appearances. Quarterly update for the Fire Chiefs Association. Honorable Jeff Madonson.
Presenting.
Article. Thank you, sir, gentlemen. Welcome again. I know much of the focus of the quarterly updates is recruitment and retention, which makes sense since we're working off the two grants right now. But later on, I'll ask you if you want to make this a more inclusive presentation of what everything that's going on with recruits or the volunteer fire departments. So to primary grants, obviously, the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association grant, which is the one that provides more, I'll call it, subject matter guidance and expertise than it does funding, although there is some funding when we have to start printing brochures and things of that nature, which is also covered by the other one. I think for you, you can see that we received the customized recruitment and retention plan. That was the basis of our two days of meetings and other material that we provided them. That plan is very high level. It predominantly leads us to a lot of the resources that are available to us through the International Association of Fire Chiefs and predominantly the Virginia or volunteer work workforce that's part of that organization. We are going to take that, and I'll mention that later on, and customize it so it's unique to Orange County at a much more detailed level. We held a joint Orange VFC plan review, which is, again, the document you're looking at. We spent, I want to say, two, three hours on the phone, went through every line item, where these resources are, what some of their recommendations are. And then, of course, they provided those, the reporting details that we have to provide in that first report, which is basically a report of our activities as of, it was due July 10th, and I have that as my responsibility. We also received a scholarship that was brought to our attention at that meeting. And with that scholarship money, and we're getting ready to submit the receipts for reimbursement to send John Farrell, who is, I guess, an administrative member, I'm not sure what it's really called, at Lake of the Woods Fire Department, he's not a responding firefighter, but he's a godsend, and the guy does tons of work and has some great insight connections. We sent him to a recruitment and retention coordinator class, and that was paid for by the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association in the IFC. He completed that on April 11th and has since been back. And then because of that, what Chief Moore and I have decided or discussed is that since we now have two coordinators, certified coordinators, the other one being Bart Lace of Angie Company 24, who is also the deputy fire chief in Stafford County, running their training division, that we're going to let Bart and John take more of a coordinator leading role for the recruitment and retention committee, and Moore and I will be more of a senior advisory role so that we can get them more deeply involved. The FEMA grant, as you know, because you gentlemen approved it, as far as I know, the award went out for the two first arriving for the multimedia plan and support, I believe on the 19th was the date, and we are working on scheduling our first kickoff. It will be virtual, we're bouncing dates and times back and forth right now. Christina is the project lead for first arriving, so Chief Moore later tried to come up with some good dates for that. From that, obviously, since I'm sure you had the opportunity to review it, there's a lot of work that comes with that, with brochures and flyers and the actual marketing and media plan and website developments and so on and so forth, so that'll be very involved. The recruitment committee will be deeply involved in that as we take advantage of opportunities to do a lot of film capture and things of that nature at the Orange County Training Ground. Obviously, we would never use an actual incident to take a lot of that marketing and media, photography, graphics, and so on and so forth. We also used the FEMA grant to purchase five sets of full structural PPE, which is a line item in the grant, for five of our recruits or candidates, whichever you prefer to call it, that participated in the Orange County Fire Academy, our first one. It was unique that not only was it our first academy, it was also during COVID, so we ran it as a hybrid class, which basically meant that the majority of the lesson material was done virtually, and then we got together for reviews and a large amount of, we'll call it, skills training and practical applications. So we have graduated 16 new certified firefighter ones in the county, which is great, and most of them are below the age of 24, so that's really great, coming for me. And then three new advanced firefighters, which we refer to as fire twos. On the 8th of May, we were testing one, two, three, four additional fire twos and a retest for three that didn't do quite so well in the written test. So with any luck and a whole lot of studying, we'll be adding more of those folks to the certified firefighter list. So all that worked out very well. I ran that academy, I don't want to do it again, but if I have to, I will, and Assistant Chief Roger Wilson helped me with that. As we move forward from an R and R committee perspective, we started doing some brochures and handout type material and then stopped, obviously, when first arriving was awarded the contract, because we don't want to waste a lot of current time where they're going to be helping us with most of that. I only gave one sample of that, we call it a wallet card, and at least at my run, as we go to events, and believe it or not, at minor calls, you know, offender vendors, things of that nature, or when assisting on EMS calls, we've been kind of handing those things out as we're talking to people. Some of these calls, I spend 10 minutes of actual incident work and then 20 minutes of just talking. Yeah, there you go. So you'd be amazed at the amount of questions that we're fielding, just with everything that's going on in the county, especially with the levy. So we've been doing a lot of public education as best as possible. We've also been researching a lot of the links and resources that the VFC has provided us. Some of it makes sense, a lot of it is tied to either existing or newly established combination fire departments, which we all know has been a focus for the last two years since I took over to Chiefs Association, as we look at better ways that we can do things as a combined public safety organization between COFMs and the volunteer departments. I know I spend probably as much of my time responding to medical calls with Morse guys than I do fighting fires and car accidents these days, unfortunately, but that's where the work is, is on the EMS side. We're continuing discussions with the Virginia Department of Veterans Affairs. I wish I had never gone down this road, but I'm still on this road. I think we're on our 80th pound of paper now. The county has got a fairly significant amount of veterans that reside in the county, many of them under the age of 30, and there are a lot of opportunities out there where through the VA grants or the GI bills, once we get this approved, if we can, when they attend our training, they can actually draw GI funds, GI bill funds, for housing expenses and things of that nature, because it actually leads to certification. So I'm still working that, and like I said, it's an ongoing thing. I've already talked about first arriving, we have a lot of good proposals submitted, they were clearly a standout, they've got a lot of experience, and I've been talking with a lot of chiefs about them. I've already mentioned the fact that we have firefighter Bart Lace and John Farrell that are going to be taking over the board, they were wholeheartedly excited about doing it, more from an actions standpoint, as we develop our POA and M, and then we combine what we're doing between the two grants and move on from there. And then, of course, using the VFCR and R plan, which, again, is very high level, our focus right now is hopefully to have our own personalized or detailed plan done within the next 90 to 120 days, so that we can send it out for review. I know I try to send as much as I can to the county administrator, he's got some great insight, past experience in this, has been a great asset. So from an R and R standpoint, gentlemen, that's all I have for the updates. Other than drafting a whole lot of plans, I think we're going to be kind of busy here, starting next month, because I think that's when the multimedia works. Questions?
I'm looking at this thing here.
Yes, sir.
In terms of a whole bunch of recommendations with the little check boxes, is that what you're working on now?
Yes, sir.
Now finishing this off and making your own decisions as to where we go with this?
Right, so that's their high level plan, and we're translating that into what is specific to Orange County.
Okay.
So the draft that you'll see here in a few months will be Orange County specific. And I know I keep saying fire, because it's all, you know, organization names of fire departments, but this includes the rescue side of Company 29. There are a lot of folks who call me and say, I don't want to fight fires, but I'll ride your ambulance, and I go, I don't have one yet, but let me send you to Lake of the Woods or whatever the case may be, so. Anything else?
Questions or comments?
So my only question to you, sir, and you can think about this, obviously, is that we can continue to do a focus that's just R and R, or we can make this a more inclusive volunteer fire and EMS status brief that we can bring to you, the loads know all the things we have going on, whether it be call volumes, issues, complaints, whatever the case may be, but I'll leave that to you gentlemen to decide what you want to do.
What is your, what is your ages of these students you're referring to?
So in the last class, about a third of the fire two students were folks that have been around for a while, and they're in the 30 to 32 age group. The bulk of the new firefighter ones were, the oldest was 24 and the youngest was 17. It's a pretty good mix.
Do you have any feel for the retention of those people?
So nine of them are mine, they're all brand new recruits that we brought in over the last five or six months. Everybody except for one, I'm expecting to stay, and the one I think will leave is going to a diesel mechanic school in North Carolina for two years, so that's why we'll lose them. So, and we're starting to get a lot of interest from folks from, that are right on the line of 621 from Spotsylvania, because as you know, the career guys are not allowed to volunteer in our own county anymore, but they still want to volunteer, so we're getting a lot of that interest. And the numbers of career folks from Fredericksburg and Stafford that are moving into Orange County have been calling us, so.
Anything else?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next, is the standard agenda?
Motion approved.
Side.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass it unanimously. New business. Adoption of the F Y 2022 to 2026 C I P.
So as usual, in the C I P process, I work with department heads and constitutional officers to gain their requests and projects for not only the next fiscal year, but for subsequent years. So this report is looking at five-year C I P for 22 to 26. The first year items for F Y 22 mirror what has been presented to you in the budget. We also worked with the appropriate debt payments and fire levy fund projects where we could to keep those in line with our financial policies. And the only projects that are a little bit different or aren't unusual repair or replacement are the four that I noted in the middle of my memo here. One is the A M D fighter protocol for the 911 center, and that funding source is suggested to be the fire and EMS levy fund. The VoIP system upgrades, which is our telephone system. That's the general fund, a utility shed for the disc off course as requested by Parks and Rec, and an $8,000 contribution for the James Madison Museum parking lot repair, which is a one-time request. Any questions or point out anything or explain anything that you may have? I know it's a very large document.
Is there a supervisor room in that utility shed?
Not that one's turned in with the paperwork.
You know anything about that?
Stool in there.
Wasn't on that committee.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
One thing I did note in going through the, I don't know if I can find the, the particular section, but a large portion of our, there it is, I did find it. Each year's funding goes toward what we're categorizing as replacement. And in a way, that's the good news. We put things, buses and sheriff's vehicles and some computers and other things on the, on the, on our.
Almost 8%.
Yeah, our replacement cycle. And that gobbles up, well, in 2022, it's ticked under 3 million, 2023 is a little bit of that. The question that came to mind is in some cases, those cycles have been in place for a few years, sheriffs, for example. And I'm, I'm wondering if we need a way of sort of checking on how that's working and whether or not it's, I mean, in the case of the sheriff's vehicle and a few others, sort of streamlined from here all the way through the five years, which may be perfectly fine. But I don't know that we could answer the question, is that the right number? And, and is it, is it covering what needs to be done? Have we caught up to the point where we could skip part of a year? Or those kinds of questions that seem to be worth asking going forward. I'm not trying to create a whole lot of work for you, but it seems to me that that's an important conversation to have.
Absolutely. And in particular, I have started that with Major LeCasse in regards to the sheriff's office. And after this cycle, he was going to look, look at things again because as you know, he's been able to have a lot of cost savings in his operating budget for repair and maintenance. And with this last cycle, they're caught up sort of on all of their older vehicles. So that's.
I think that's really the point.
So is he going to need six? Do we need five? Do they need four? You know, those types of conversations.
I think we agree.
For, for COFMs as well.
Right.
Or any of our.
And tour buses and also.
Tour buses, especially since it's.
I don't want to undercut the discipline that we put in place to keep these replacement cycles going because I think, I think it's right. But that doesn't mean that, that it's a static decision. I think there's some analysis that can take place now that we have some history. There should be some savings. And maybe we've caught up a little bit in some cases.
And we have a better idea of use in a lot of cases where they didn't have functioning vehicles before. So for example, like Office on Youth and Parks and Rec, their replacement cycles for seven to 10 years and sometimes we can stretch that even more because they put less than 20,000 miles a year on their vehicles. So absolutely.
Another level of sophistication, if you will, I think is, is in order.
Sure.
We should have, should have the data to be able to track that. And it's, it's a substantial sum of money.
Any other discussion?
Are there any questions on any of the new? I wanted to point out that those, those four projects are the only new ones. As Mr. White mentioned, all the others with the exception of two were replacement. So you've seen them before. So I just wanted to make sure you didn't have any questions about any of the new projects that I can help with.
Motion for this?
Yes, sir.
Option of the C I P. So moved. Second. All second. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Pass it unanimously.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Stephanie. All right, Amanda, award of the contract for general and individual architectural services.
Good evening, everyone. In February this year, we released a solicitation seeking proposals from firms for engineering and architectural services, including but not limited to civil planning, construction, construction administration, inspection, inspection services and associated survey and environmental, geotechnical and architectural services for various department, departments on an, on as needed basis. We received nine responses. The selection committee reviewed these responses and we held interviews with the firms, the top firms that best suited what we were looking for. Where staff recommends that the following officer, offers be awarded contracts. Island Wilson, Draper Aiden, Timmons Group, R K and K, the Thrasher Group, which is a new firm and new to Orange County, and S C I, which currently have a storm order contract with us. The terms would be one year with possibility of four additional renewals. There's no guarantee of the amount of work to be assigned. And furthermore, the county shall utilize its right to procure additional consulting, architectural and engineering services from other firms at any time.
Any questions for Amanda?
Yes. Are all these firms have unique capabilities or a lot of overlap between?
Well, they're, they kind of overlap. This newer group, the Thrasher group, they actually have, which could benefit us at some time, they have a grant writer on staff and they have an office in Fredericksburg. So they're fairly close. For the most part, they all pretty much have the same engineering and architectural features.
So when we decide to use any specific one, do we, do we go to multiple ones to look at how they would solve a problem for us? I saw it back there. That's good.
Yeah. And, and some specialize more in utility, some more engineer, some more architect. They usually.
Some transportation.
With other groups to offer the wide variety, but their bread and butter is usually either architect, general engineering, utility, transportation.
Question, if they have, if they're working with a developer, would we use a different firm for a particular project rather than them? That's the answer I was making sure of. Yeah, we would not have a conflict.
That's what we've done in the past.
Okay. Just wanted to reassure that.
Yes.
I like to put a fish bait out occasionally. All right. Any other questions for Amanda?
Move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Pass it unanimously. Thank you, Amanda. You may as well just stand right there. Soul Source Award for Zoll Medical Corporation for purchase of ventilators.
Yes, our fire and EMS staff will be purchasing ventilators from Zoll Medical Corporation. That meets the county's requirements for patient safety, use of operation interface with the current county's equipment. Additionally, Zoll currently provides parts for the existing ventilators that we do have, which is, can be very difficult to find and replace. Soul Source was created and posted, approved by the county attorney and the assistant county administrator for management services. They have provided a quote for nine Z vent, portable ventilators totaling $119,990.25. So I mean, has been allocated in the pivot 19 care is that ventilator expense line, project
Any questions for Amanda? When are we going to have an on-staff, no-technical director? It seems to be an emergency room already.
I'll get back to you on that.
Albert says he's retiring in three years.
All right, very good. All right. If there's no questions, motion. So moved. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Pass it unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next is a airport grant opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I don't really think I need same box. It's free money. We've previously received $30,000 grant and this was the next round of COVID money that was earmarked for airport use. Just no, no local match, $13,000 to offset our operational expenses. And I understand from our FAA rep that there's likely another one coming.
Motion approved.
Is all this money earmarked already?
Not necessarily, no, sir.
All right. Any other questions?
Although I will say it has to stay in the airport.
Right, that's, okay. Basically covering operating costs that we have otherwise covered out of our own budget.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it had already been spoken for or actually had some, some whittling there.
Well, yeah, we do have some ideas.
He's good. Purchased up Ken Barco lounge to serve you.
Excellent, because I need those for my office.
You knew about that.
All right. Any other questions? If not, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass it unanimously. Thank you, Kirk. Next is old business, adoption of ordinance for tax rates for calendar year 2021. Glenda.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before you is an ordinance to adopt the tax rates for calendar year 2021. As you know, a public hearing was held on April the 13th. And the only proposed change in the tax rates is a slight tweak to the multiple times rate, which will just bring it equal to the regular real estate rate plus the fire and EMS special
Thank you. Any questions for Glenda? entertain the motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Simpson, if you could do a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
And Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Glenda. Do we have the next item? I am trying to go through this new online agenda that we have. So, so far, I'm going to refer with.
You should have one of these, aren't she?
Yes, I have one of those. Do some tie-dying of the cabinet. All right. Adoption and appropriation of operating capital budget for fiscal year 2022.
Right. This is the official adoption of the budget for F Y 22. And again, a public hearing was held on April the 13th. The budget before you is a total consolidated budget for F Y 22 of $122,25,524. That's a decrease of 2.11% from the previous fiscal year, but part of that is because there are one-time expenditures included in both the 21 and the 22 budgets. So for 21, we had a major financing that was included. In 22, we have the new American Rescue Plan funds and for $7,185,000, which are included. And this is based on the tax rates that were just adopted.
Very good. Any questions for Glenda? Any discussion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Right. Any further discussion? Allison, if you would do a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Marshall? Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
And Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Five zero.
Mr. Marshall. Thank you very much, Glenda.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to take a moment to thank Glenda for all her great work. Certainly couldn't, couldn't imagine the amount of effort that goes into it and couldn't do it without her. Appreciate also the budget guidance committee. I think we struck a good balance of our work on that. I would note that we will be coming back to the board with the proposed spending plan for the ARPA funds. Staff's going to work on a draft and meet with the budget guidance committee and get something together to come back for the board to take a look at. Even though it's appropriated now, we, we, we don't have a spending plan for it. So it's really just the legal construct is in place to receive the money, but we, we don't have a spending plan. Just for that, I'm quoting.
Very good.
And I would just point out that this is the seventh consecutive cycle that we have not raised real estate taxes for personal product taxes.
Very noteworthy.
I doubt that there's been counties in Virginia that can make that claim.
All right. I see no department director or constitutional officer reports. County attorney, do you have anything?
I just wanted to record. It was a really nice day outside today. It wasn't inside all day.
Thank you very much for.
Thank you for that.
Much made, much needed, believe.
I never have anything to say, so I thought.
You can do a better job of scheduling.
That's right. All right. County administrators report. Two things listed for the board is?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members said just two items. So quarterly, I'm, to get back with you on our two-year strategic priorities. So you've got the report there in purple or blue, depending on, I guess, your, whatever monitor you're looking at. I've highlighted the accomplishments of the last quarter under vibrant economic development. And we've got a lot of progress in fiber link and the financing and customer drops there, and that's being done by them. And then we've, we talked about the G WAP and we have received the Wildus Crossing application. The I R C has started their work on that. And then on the effective reflective government, we are in the middle of rolling out our social media policy and our workflow. And so that'll be coming on shortly. We've also kicked off our, our enter gov digital planning and G I S project, which we'll give you more details on that as that rolls forward. But that's part of our electronic government initiative. And then on the key enterprise projects, land mobile radio systems made a lot of progress this last quarter. So we've got permits at hand and moving to build that last tower. And then the public safety building, we actually, since I last sent you an email about some concerns there, I received a, an updated, more aggressive schedule from the contractor. I'm not going to publicly state what that is, but it's, it's some movement and there are contractors out there today and have been this week. So let's hope that continues. With that, I'll certainly entertain. With that, I'll certainly entertain any questions?
I do have one going back to, you said something about wilderness crossing. Signature Station, is that going through a ARC process or where is that at?
That's a great question. I it's in the GWAP, so it should have the special GWAP ARC process. I am not aware of their status because it's there've been multiple inquiries from it and kind of multiple delays, so I can follow up on that, let the board know.
Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Gorges? Thank you, sir. Next, board comment.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, the second item I had was was the regional cigarette tax concept, which I've mentioned at a couple of previous meetings that the General Assembly had initiated some work to try to encourage localities to who wish to move forward with the cigarette tax that previously was not available to counties. But a couple of years ago, the General Assembly authorized that. But before anybody could implement, there was a push to try to get get it to happen regionally. So my thinking generally about this is we would generally want to take advantage of the equal taxing authority that VACO has long been seeking. But if we were going to do that, I certainly wouldn't want to reinvent the wheel. And with existing localities already collecting that tax and having administration, the easiest thing for us to do would be to kind of throw our our lot in with with some others. So I've had some conversations with the Albemarle first and the Charlottesville centric Jefferson Planning District, and then also with Patrick and the more Culpeper centric Planning District that we're a member of. Both groups have put forward sort of plans of how this would work. My sense is that the Thomas Jefferson Planning District is in a more aggressive posture to do this, probably notably because Albemarle really wants to do it. I think the Rapid and Rapid Hannock Planning District Commission is a little bit more on the fence. The towns in that group already collect, so at this point, my recommendation would be to go with whichever one, you know, feels good and would promise to do a good job where essentially we all we have to do is sign up and get and adopt a couple of ordinances and collect a check as opposed to having to create organizations and processes and what have you. And that's that's sort of my goal. So this resolution would would not commit you in any particular direction, but would send a signal to the Thomas Jefferson Planning District that we are interested. And that if, you know, they were to stand it up and invite people outside of their territory to participate, that we'd be interested in doing that. So I'd recommend that we adopt it.
Mr. Chairman. Just, I guess, a question and a comment. It seems to me that one of the goals should be to have a uniform rate, you know, at a fairly broad regional basis, because you know, I happened to grow up in that community that didn't do that for other items. And there was all this traveling back and forth to, because you can do something at one age in one county and not in all in another. And it was just, it was a comedy of errors. And it seems to me that that should be one of the goals, is to have a consistent rate across across the region. And I think you, I think that is one of the stated goals that in the draft resolution, laugh whereas uses the term would promote the uniform administration. Is that, by that, do you mean uniformity of rates? Because it seems to me that's a that's a key if I said a key goal that we should be trying to achieve. We're going to do this, let's not be an outlier one way or the other, frankly, because it's disruptive.
Well, I certainly think you raise a great point, and that is a point that I made in my conversations, that if 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 we set a uniform rate in a region, that you will discourage that kind of jurisdiction shopping. I am told by some of the towns that they they don't seem to notice much of that, even though they have that issue, that you could go outside of the town and buy cigarettes at a locale and not pay the tax. They don't really see a lot of that. But nonetheless, I still think that if you have a uniform rate, you really completely eliminate it. And I said my recommendation to this board would be, whatever the region wants to do, we should we should do it and go along. There is some interest by the existing taxing jurisdictions, typically the towns and cities, of preserving their autonomy. And so they may want to say, well, you know, we think it's it's our autonomous right to be able to set that rate. So I, you know, we can make that argument, but I imagine that they'll they'll still have the right to differentiate. But I would hope that they would all just gravitate toward a toward a single uniform rate. With the exception of Charlottesville, who has statutory authority to be higher already, and so they wouldn't want to drop down to the forty. Forty cents is the maximum that counties can do, that jurisdictions can do that have already.
How much are we thinking that we, how much revenue are we taking?
There's a, it's it's a challenge to estimate something, but the estimates that have been done suggest our take would be around three hundred thousand dollars annually. So it's not inconsequential.
I think there's probably going to be some discussion tomorrow with the regional commission meeting. I would certainly hope we had a discussion the last commission meeting. And that is one of the problems is the towns don't charge the same as other towns, and they have no desire to charge what counts, George.
But if they all charged the same, they would see a windfall and and could blame us, so it's kind of that to me, that as a town manager, former town manager, that's a win-win.
I I'm not sure I really care. I mean, quite frankly, I mean, if this were something, I I would agree that on some things, it's good to have some uniformity on taxes like this. I can't really we don't have uniformity in any of our other taxes. We don't set our real estate rate based on spots venues or our personal property based on spots venues, so I don't I don't see the harm in one way or the other.
The only question is, would there be difficulties in administration if you have multiple rates from different jurisdictions?
From what these committees have said, absolutely not. It's very simple. They do the administration of it.
They have a single tax form or tax stamp that but the money is allocated based upon?
They either have a single one or they have multiple ones. It all depends on what the regional one wants to do. And for us, where we probably benefit the most, there's a few markets that sell cigarettes in the county. But Walmart is probably the one of the larger ones that doesn't have, they're not in competition with one of the towns anyway.
Northern Virginia is the is the largest region, and they do allow the jurisdiction to pick the rate, and then the revenue is just distributed by its math.
That I would worry about conformity.
What percent of this rate increase will come back to the localities?
Well, so the the idea is that counties up until now haven't been able to collect any tax on cigarette sales. And towns have been able to. So the legislative goal for VACO and the member jurisdictions was to create tax uniformity, tax parity, to have the same authority. So they granted that, and now we're going through the exercise of deciding, do we want to tax cigarettes? If so, at what rate and how do we want to do it? My concern would be, I don't want to set up a department of cigarette taxation.
I understand, but like you, like the sixty percent, sixty cents before this, it goes into the general fund, right?
Well, so so if we charge the the max, the forty cent, or whatever we charge, one hundred percent of of the money would come to us.
Right, one hundred percent.
That we charge in our jurisdiction, less whatever we had to pay to administer this to the regional body. So they might, you know, charge five percent of the total or seven percent of the total or something. It it really depends on how big the partnership is and what their costs are. And the general goal has been to make it, you know, small enough to do the work, big enough to to not mess it up, but, you know, give us most of the money back.
Be comparison, how much of the sixty cents is coming back to localities? Just curious. Any idea?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, it's already currently a sixty cent.
Oh, the state, the state tax, we, well, I don't, I I think I would say there's not really a way to know, you know, to tie it through. We get what we get from the state for all the different pots of money we get, but how much of that comes from the cigarette tax specifically? I don't I don't know that it's.
We do have a specific monthly sales tax. But I think this is this is a difference.
Windfall, right?
This is a special tax.
This is on top of anything else we, right?
It's a new tax.
It's a new tax.
Yes.
That's.
That's 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 right. It's something that towns and cities can do, and counties had not been able to do. And it is not included in the budget, so.
I would move, since this is going to take a while to do, I would move that we would approve this resolution.
I'm sorry.
Well, I think the res, yeah, I think the resolution calls for an expression of interest that we would pursue.
Go forward.
I think we still have a lot of faith, but it's worth pursuing, so I'll second.
Any further discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Passage in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Board comment, start now with Mr. Frain.
I don't have any.
Oh, I have a couple. What is serious and what is light-hearted? Which should I do first? We got an email a few days ago that next week is Small Business Appreciation Day in Orange County. And I just wanted to mention that in my district, there is a small business that will be celebrating its thirtieth anniversary.
Do they sell tires?
They do sell tires, yes, except on except on Tuesdays. They don't sell them on Tuesdays. So I seriously, I do want to thank my customers for the last thirty years for coming to Johnson Tire and buying their tires there.
Very good.
The the more serious comment is we've gotten a couple of unsigned letters recently talking about being unhappy about fire response. I think they were both related to Lake of the Woods, but and there is probably a time and a place for anonymous letters. But these are, I find, kind of tiresome. You know, if 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 there's something, if you want to, you know, bring something to our attention, let us know who you are so we can sort of judge the veracity. Talk to you, find out the situation. I don't know if these are from the same person. They read that way. If they're not from the same person, I think they're from the same group of people. And I I really think that it strikes me, and I, you know, I'm not, it's not a personal comment, because I don't know who this person is. But the the letters strike me as being very manipulative, and they're just kind of pushing an agenda. And, you know, I would ask whoever's writing them, just just stop it. Because basically, your your letter goes into the trash can, as far as I'm concerned, because you're just you're kind of standing in the shadows, throwing rocks at people who are out providing services and services, and that's easy to do. But, you know, if there's a legitimate problem, you know, we're not going to we're not going to come to your house and throw rocks through your windows. You know, there's no, I I can't imagine why someone would be afraid to just come out and say, you know, there's a problem here. So that's my my message would be to the the individual or individuals who are writing this to, you know, be an adult and come out of the shadows.
Absolutely must agree with you, sir.
Mr. White?
I do have one comment. There's increasing interest in the solar generating facilities in the county. I think that and the planning commission, as you know, had a resolution, passed a resolution to basically take a little bit of a timeout. I'm not sure that we're quite ready to make that decision. It does seem to me that some focused discussion by this body on a whole range of topics related to this, partly because of some tools that the state has given us, partly because some of the the size of some of the applications has grown to be quite large. So I guess I'd like to see us, you know, through a series of work sessions or other kinds of formats over the coming weeks or possibly months, maybe look at this area in great detail, because it seems to me that one of the things that that we need to be able to do to identify the impacts and align certain conditions as maybe necessary to mitigate these impacts as best we can. So I think our our process needs to be evaluated in various details. I mentioned one earlier, I think is important. You know, I, as I read the land use taxation ordinance at the moment, there's potentially a rollback could get triggered in these things. We need to look at that item along with lots of others. So my recommendation, we we find some way, most likely through a series of work sessions or something like that, do a little bit, prepare a little bit better to the rest of the applications that we're here to do.
I would imagine there's a lot of material out there that deals with some of these issues.
Other localities, other states have dealt with them, and so we I don't, we don't necessarily have to reinvent everything, but but we do have to find a way forward.
Right.
I've just had a discussion with county attorney about doing a work session regarding to the legal aspects of it. And then also I've been working with county administrator to join its solo consortium, which can provide us a lot of, they can actually provide workshops for us as well as a lot of good valuable information. So I haven't had a chance yet to see about getting them scheduled, but probably need to do them sooner than later.
And I'd like to add that I think one of the issues that we need to to come to grips with is this, in addition to a land use type decision, there's also a financial set of decisions that that need to be made because of siting agreements and other kind of things. So there's a, we need to be prepared to address both aspects.
I believe that consortium, that is something that they they address as well, the whole spectrum, so.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Marshall?
I had an opportunity to visit, we had a fire here locally, and it saw me the way outside of Orange. And I took the opportunity and was very impressed with the amount of personnel and equipment that was involved. And I just want to say how much I appreciated everybody's dedication. One problem I did see was I didn't see too many young people out there fighting that fire. And I can appreciate the hard work that goes into it and need for recruitment and bringing up some youth and kind of help out. Because it's not easy work. As you get a little longer in age, it makes it even harder, so. So just want to let you know how much I appreciate what you do. And a lot of people in the community do. So just want to say thank you.
All right. There's actually, if the, if the board historian, may I have a moment?
Please.
Found this photograph at the Orange Review recently. And Michelle has a copy of it. It will be added to the wall out here. This is the board, the five board members that served from 1992 to 1995. And they are John Noel and Grover Wilson, Ray Jones, Phil Roberts, and Doug Green.
So Will is there?
Yes. So I got Michelle, Michelle has graciously made us a copy of that. And it will be framed and added to the, to the wall in there. And that is from the, from the Orange Review files of the Orange Review.
Duff was still there, correct?
No, well, no, not, no, they had sold it, they sold it back in the eighties. But he was, he still had a hand in.
Right.
Doing, doing special projects.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Woodston. We appreciate that. Good work. You would get a comment, Dave?
Yeah, good, raise a finger.
That's right. All right. Next is informational items. If there's any questions there. Next is appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have any? Who wants to, so we'll move on to the next item, which is calendar. Only thing I can see on the calendar is consideration to schedule a public hearing for rezoning 20-01, which is Signature Series Development. May 25th, is that correct, Allison?
May 25th is the earliest date. They did just receive their recommendation from the Planning Commission public hearing.
I would, I'd like to make a suggestion. This is the first rezoning that will come through the GWAP process.
Yes.
I think a work session with them before the, of the hearing would be a good idea.
Any other comments you're brought in?
I think that is the, the applicant review committee process that's mentioned earlier. We need to make sure that that's scheduled and put together as well because.
Was, was that done prior to the planning commission meeting? Should it have been?
No, it should, should have been. It should have been, but it was, was not. I'm not sure how, somebody needs to look into that and see how, how best to catch that process up, if, if it can be done at all.
Well, I would suggest maybe.
Yeah, well, even, even more so.
On, on the 25th, do we have any work session items scheduled for the 25th?
I know we do for the 11th. I don't think we do for the 25th at this point.
If, if we don't have for the 25th, see if we can get the applicants in here for work session. Do we have any time limits for this 25th hearing?
You have a year.
What's that?
You have a year to process this, one year. From the application point, that was not that far.
So you're saying not scheduled.
Not, not scheduled, we're talking hearing, like schedule a work session for the 25th if it's available and they can make it. Because based on this particular one especially, there's, there's some, some changes that we, we need to be a little more informed about. And I think there's a little bit of confusion as to some of what they've offered or not offered.
Is that fair statement, Mr. Johnson?
The confusion part is, yes, I don't know about the little bit.
Yes, okay.
But I was unaware that they had not gone through the, the ARC, so.
Okay, very good. All right, we have no closed meeting. I would entertain one more. Move to turn.
Second.
Paul and Taylor.
Aye.
Aye.
We are the turn.
Marshall, are you doing?
I'm doing.
This is.
Allison, hopefully I'll be there.